All right. Hello, Williamsburg County citizens. We are now live. Note that in response to the coronavirus COVID meeting is council chambers is closed and it is restricted to the public from members of council and required staff only. The public in any that need any media public can access via Williamsburg County Facebook, Williamsburg County Government Facebook page, or by dialing in to the toll free number of one eight seven seven three zero nine two zero seven three. And the access code is five nine zero three eight zero dash five eight nine is the access code. At this time, marketing media team, do we have anyone on Facebook? And can we get a sound check from Facebook?
Mr. Bailey. What you got?
Checking.
Okay, sound, sound is okay on our end. Okay, that's on the Facebook side you saying summer? Facebook, yeah. And we don't have, and currently we do not have anybody toned in on the conference line. Okay, and I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order, our regularly scheduled council meeting, which is today, July twenty first, twenty twenty at two twelve P. M. Invocation, can we have the invocation? Who would like to do the invocation tonight, today?
I'll do it.
Go ahead, Charles.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, thank God, and thank you for life, health, and strength. And thank you for the dawning of a new day, a day which we've never seen before. Heavenly Father, we want to ask that you be with us today as we enter into this meeting, as we try to discuss the business of the county of Williamsburg. And heavenly Father, we want to ask that the things that we do and say be pleasing in your sight. And we want you to open the minds and understanding of those that are in attendance and those that are listening. The heavenly Father, and help put us all on one accord, and help us all have one mindset, doing what's best in the best interest of the citizens of Williamsburg County. And when all is said and done, it will all be pleasing in your sight. And we do it all for the glorification of your name and your kingdom. These are many other blessings we pray, in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Our first order of business is the approval of the minutes for the special call council meeting that was scheduled on June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Also, the special call council meeting that was conducted on July ninth, twenty twenty, and the special call meeting that was conducted July twentieth, twenty twenty. We need a motion for approval of the minutes.
So move, Madam Chairman, District one.
District three.
Okay. Any discussion regarding the minutes? Hearing none, by roll. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposers, the same. District?
District one, aye.
One. District two. District three.
Aye.
District four.
District four, aye.
District two. District five and district six.
Ah. I was muted. District two, aye.
Like, what's going on? Okay. Um, and any nays at this?
You didn't call District seven.
I'm sorry, District seven.
Aye.
Thank you, the ayes have it. It is so approved for the minutes for the special call council meetings that were conducted previously. Our first, next order of business is ordinances. We do not have anything for third reading. However, we do have a second reading of ordinance number two zero two zero dash eleven, and that's the ordinance authorizing the implementation of a volunteer separation program for eligible county employees due to the financial impact of COVID nineteen and its effect upon the economy and the incurred financial revenue losses as a result of the pandemic, and to manage the county's finances by the establishment of a retirement incentive plan offered to all eligible employees. We need a motion for second reading.
So move. District three.
District seven, second.
Seven.
Any discussion? Hearing none, by roll. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. And opposers, nay, by roll. District one.
Aye.
District two.
Aye.
District three.
Aye.
District four.
Aye.
District five. District six. District seven.
Aye.
The ayes have it. It is so, or second reading of ordinance, twenty twenty, motion is carried. The next order is the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty dash twelve, an ordinance providing for the closure of a portion of the Low Country and Guy Road in the county of Williamsburg, state of South Carolina. The road closure will commence on the southern end of the Low Country Road at the Hammond Family Properties LLC properties line, then north to Guy Road, then along Guy Road to the property line of Denise Martin et al., as shown on the exhibits on the map that was attached in the previous meeting. Williamsburg County will be authorized to execute a quick claim deed to the road to the affected landowners. We need a motion for second approval.
Motion for second reading, Madam Supervisor.
Second. District seven.
Any discussion? Hearing none. And all those in favor, please, by roll, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. And opposers, nay. District one.
Aye.
District two.
Aye.
District three.
Aye.
Aye. Four, aye.
District five. Six.
Ah.
And district seven.
Aye.
Motion just carried for a second reading of ordinance number two zero two zero one two. The next ordinance on, on the next ordinance, this is the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty dash fifteen, an ordinance providing for the closure of a portion of Gator Road and a portion of Victory Drive in the county of Williamsburg, state of South Carolina. The road closure will drive, will commence at the Wall and Camp, and Campbell Property Line connection five, and then on five, in an easternly direction to the end of the Wall Property Line, as shown on the map that was issued out the last council meeting. Williamsburg County will be authorized to execute a quick claim deed to the road to the affected landowner. We need a motion for second reading.
A motion for approval of second reading, Madam Supervisor. They keep coming from District four.
Any discussion? Hearing none, by roll, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. And opposers, nay, by roll. District one.
Aye.
District two.
Aye.
District three.
Aye.
Four.
Aye.
Aye.
District five, districts six, district seven.
Aye.
The ayes have it, the motion is carried. Second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty dash fourteen, an ordinance providing for the closure of the Coastline Road in the county of Williamsburg, state of South Carolina. The closure will begin at the intersection of Coastal Coastline Road, South Carolina, Highway three seventy seven, Martin Luther King Highway on the southern end, and the CSX rail right away on the northern end, and running through lands of Thorn Tree Farm LLC, as shown on the exhibit that was, um, that was provided last council meeting. Williamsburg County will be authorized to execute a quick claim deed to the road to the affected land. We need a motion for second reading.
District two, motion for second reading.
I need a second.
District seven, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, by roll, all those in favor of the second reading of the ordinance number two zero dash two zero two zero dash fourteen, please signify by saying aye, and opposers, the same, by roll. District one.
Aye.
District two.
Aye.
District three.
Aye.
District four.
Aye.
Five, six.
Aye.
District seven.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The motion is carried. Second reading for ordinance number two zero two zero dash fifteen, an ordinance providing for the closure of Page Road in the county of Williamsburg, state of South Carolina, beginning at the intersection with U. S. Highway two sixty one, then north to the intersection of Blind passing through the land of Guy E. McClary and Red Mountain Timber CO LLC, as shown in the exhibit that was, um, was provided last council meeting. Williamsburg County will authorize, will be authorized to execute a quick claim deed to the road to the affected landowner. We need a motion for second reading.
District two, motion for second.
We need a second.
District four, second.
We have any discussion? Hearing none, by roll, all those in favor signify by saying aye. And opposers, nay, by roll. District one.
Aye.
District two.
Aye. Aye.
District three.
Aye.
District four.
Aye.
District five. District seven.
Aye. District six.
Ah.
Um, the next week is for second reading for ordinance. Oh, the ayes have it, the motion is carried. Second reading of ordinance twenty twenty dash sixteen, an ordinance providing for the closure of a section of McMillan Road in the county of Williamsburg, state of South Carolina. The closure will begin at the northern end of the intersection of the Stephanie Haddock line in the south direction along McMillan Road to north end of Saint John Baptist Church property line intersecting with Tadaro twenty sixteen LLC line, and running through lands of Stephanie Hancock, Knollwood, Inc., and Tadaro twenty sixteen LLC, shown on the exhibit that was issued the last council meeting. Williamsburg County will be authorized to execute a quick claim deed to the road to the affected landowner. We need a motion for second reading.
Madam Supervisor, unread this. You said this is second reading for that McMillan Road?
Yes, sir.
I don't think we had a first reading on that road.
We did first reading last time.
Uh, did, did we? You brought it up.
There wasn't first reading.
Okay. Okay. Motion.
District six.
District one.
Hey, you have a motion. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Hearing none. And all those in favor, by roll, please signify by saying aye. And opposers, nay, by roll. District one.
Aye.
District two.
Ah.
District three.
Three. Aye, for three.
District four.
Four, aye.
District five. District six.
Ah.
District seven.
Aye.
The ayes have it, the motion is carried for second reading. Um, the next order, next business is second reading of ordinance twenty twenty dash seventeen, an ordinance providing for the closure of a portion of Belin's Church Road in county Williamsburg, South Carol, South Carolina. The Belin's, I hope I'm pronouncing that right. Road closure will commence on the western property line of Linda Powell, and then westernly along Belin's Church Road to the property line of Black Mingo Baptist Church, as shown in the exhibit that was issued last council meeting. Williamsburg County will execute a quick claim deed from the, from Williamsburg County to Hemingway Family LP and Red Mountain Timber LLC of the road. We need a motion for second reading.
So move, Madam Chairman.
So that's District two.
Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am. Could I, could I ask, could I ask Mr. Jenkinson a question?
Sure.
Yes, sir.
This road, this road continuously goes from forty one to the Neeshmith Highway. Now, what, 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 when you close this road, it, it, it's gonna go across this bridge and stop? It's not gonna go all the way to the Neeshmith Highway from forty one, is it?
No, sir. It, it's, the line stops behind the old Blaine Baptist Church graveyard. So you can get to that, you know, road, the road closes on the other side of the graveyard on the bridge side, and then goes down towards forty one and stops at the first property line of, I think it may be the Powell's or whoever, but it does not include, it stops there.
All right, so, so, so the people coming from the Neeshmith Road can get to the graveyard?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Supervisor, question. I notice every council meeting we have now, within the last six to eight months, we have a litany of roads to be closed. Do you have any idea, even though we take some burden off the county for maintaining them, but do you have any idea as to what is prompting all these road closing all of a sudden?
We started receiving a number for last fall, okay? And then with, with COVID hit, and so many of them were coming in, and some of them came from council members, some of them came from people through council members. Um, some of them came in, and then we were, and we decided just to bunch them all up and do them all at one time, rather than piecemeal them, and have, do all that advertising, and just be more economical, time-wise, just to bunch them. But it is a lot of them, I've never had this happen before.
Okay, I was just wondering why, because I've been on council for years and years, and I've never seen this many requests for road closures, and I thought there was something special going on that I need, didn't know about, as a result of all these roads being closed, all going back through woods and stuff. And most of them shoot through woods and stuff, so forth. And I was just trying to figure out, all of a sudden, you explained somewhat why. But, um, and a lot of them, the council members don't have any knowledge of the rules, even having been requested to be closed.
I have never processed one without running it by a council member, except for the back, because we were not sure of which county, district that was in. And I had, I had Mr. Ricky Scott investigate it, and that's how we got you. And we were not gonna do anything until you approved. But every single one of them has been approved or requested by a council member. And most of them were driven by trash being deposited, um, illegal activity like that. So it just wasn't any use to even keep them open for whatever reason.
On that McMillan, on that McMillan Road, I didn't know anything about it at the last council meeting, when you said you had a request to close it. Then I started checking on it and talking to residents in the area, and I got some more information, but I was unaware of that road, even when it initially came up for closure. And I was wondering, um, what was the process there?
We, we have a process, that was a part of this whole exercise. Um, we y'all passed a policy of road closing, and we've been following that policy as we go forward.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, we go through the process with the, the, the read, the two readings and the public hearing and so forth. But I was just wondering why we didn't put up anything in, in, in place where the representative from that area should be informed even before it comes up. I just think that would be a good gesture to let them know before it even gets on the agenda that a road in your area is out, is requesting to be closed. You may want to check on it, to make sure that, um, the citizens are okay with it. I did, but I didn't know about it until after it was on the agenda and brought up at, at our meeting, at the meeting. But everything is good.
So going forward, what we're saying is that we need to make sure that council members before that the items have been discussed with them before it hits the agenda. Pretty much what you want, right?
Yes.
All right, so um, any other discussion? Hearing none, by roll, all those in favor of ordinance number twenty twenty dash eighteen, by roll, please signify by saying aye. And we're in the roll call, just, oh, say again.
That's seventeen?
I jumped, yeah, I jumped up.
Right.
Seventeen. District one, zero dash seventeen. Um, by roll, district two.
Aye.
Three.
Aye.
Four.
Aye.
Five, six. Seven.
Aye.
Ayes have it, the motion is carried. Now we move down to the reading of ordinance number twenty twenty dash eighteen, an ordinance to provide that a public referendum be held at the general election in November twenty twenty pursuant to the provisions of the South Carolina Code, Section sixty one dash six dash twenty ten, to determine whether or not rare permits may be issued to allow for the possession, sale, and consumption of alcoholic liquor by the drink at permitted, permitted off premises locations without regards to days or hours of sales in Williamsburg County. We need a motion for second reading.
So, District three.
Second, District seven.
Second. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Supervisor. I had a constituent call me concerning the way you're saying reads about sale of, it reads liquors, non-alcoholic of liquors, and I did some research on it. I don't, I'm not sure which council member proposed this. But just so everybody knows what they're voting on, it's in the sale of beer and wine in a grocery store. This is the sale of liquor at, by a vendor poured in, poured in glass. And so I just want to make sure, I called Mr. Jenkinson, and he was on vacation. So I just kind of took it upon myself to do a little research. But I don't want anybody to be confused. In fact, we're approving where grocery stores, or, or at least it's my opinion, where a grocery store or any of your local, uh, like, convenience stores would be selling beer and wine. This applies, this applies strictly to liquor by the glass. So I just want to make sure y'all know what you vote on.
Hold on, uh.
Wait a minute.
Yeah, well, yeah. We're talking about. Yeah.
I don't know what, what it was intended to be, but I would tell you, I would ask Mr. Jenkinson, whoever contacted him and asked him to put this on the agenda, whichever council member it was, when you deal with section, if you look at sixty one dash six deals with liquor, and sixty one dash four goes, it goes with the sale of beer and wine. It's really strange the way they're classified. Um, I, I contacted Department of Revenue and spoke with someone there, and I'll read you the definition of not, of what beer and wine is, believe it or not. It's because it was done back during prohibition. Beer and wine is classified as the non-alcoholic beverages defined. The following are declared to be non-alcoholic and non-impulsating beverages. It says all beers, ales, porters, and other several amount or fermented beverages containing, not in excess of five percent of alcohol by weight, so that's considered a beer. And then the next statute, I'm not gonna read it to you, is the wine. This is dealing with sale of liquor by the glass. You understand what I'm saying? So if someone were to apply for one day, to have some kind of convention or something, this would give them the authority to sell liquor by the glass. I don't know what the intent of the person initiating the legislation was. My understanding at first reading, it was, it was what I thought it was, beer and wine.
That's what I thought also.
That was what I thought, too.
My bad, Mr. Jenkinson, my bad. I just asked Mr. Jenkinson to clarify for us when he gets a chance, to make sure my, my determination is correct as well.
Um, Councilwoman Floyd and I had a brief discussion before the meeting, and I agree with him. And all we need to do, if you want to add beer and wine, we just simply put alcoholic liquors, beer, and wine. And I'll
Yeah, but I don't, but I don't think it's code section, Mr. Jenkinson, and certainly I'm not, I certainly yield to higher authority. You've been doing this a lot longer than I have. But, but sixty one, six, two, ten specifically calls, the state statute specifically called, the permit is valid. It says temporary permit for the sale and consumption of alcoholic liquors by the drink. And, and so beer and wine would be classified as non-alcoholic liquor, so it wouldn't fall under this statute. And I'll come over when you and I sit in a round table. But I just, I don't know what the intent of the person initiating it is, but if it is to include beer and wine, I don't think that's what we're doing.
Well, we need to amend it to include beer and wine.
Right.
Right.
Because the intent was beer and wine.
Right.
When we drafted it, but that was, but that is a valid issue. And that was gonna be my recommendation when we were discussing this, is if you want to include beer and wine, would you simply amend it? Include beer and wine, and I'll have that in your hand for third reading.
Okay, but you're, and I'll speak with you, but you're gonna have to go onto something other than sixty, and we getting legal lease now. Other than sixty one, six, two, ten, you got to pull the code section out of sixty one dash four dash whatever included. But anyway, that, that's, that's neither here nor there, it was only second reading.
Okay.
Question. Want to amend it at this time before we have second reading?
Go ahead.
Include that or not?
Legal counsel, Mr. Jenkinson, I'll let you make that decision. We can table it, let you amend it, or we can.
What did the person want?
I'd just like some guidance for the next reading, so we can do it as to whether or not you want me to include that or not. If you don't want to vote on that, man, that's fine. I just would like, if you, if you would like me to include it for consideration, it will need an amendment at the next reading.
Uh, Mr. Jenkinson, do you know, do you, do you outright on here know what the intent of the was?
I really.
Intent is supposed to be for beer and wine sales.
Right. That was for beer and wine sales.
Right.
Thing that was, was brought up, um, by some, some members of council as to wanting to do this. So, you know, and I can, I agreed with it. So I think it, the main premise was for the beer and wine on any day sale.
Right.
Madam Supervisor, I would, I would make a motion, we just tabled second reading for Mr. Jenkinson to get it clarified. So that we, we know we get it right, so we won't have to do it two times. It's not any urge, sense of urgency that I'm aware of to get this voted on today.
There's a sense of urgency because you're getting ready to print the ballot, go on at November ballot.
I was getting it on the ballot.
Oh, okay, I didn't think about.
Well, let me, let me ask you a question. Um, Mr. Jenkinson, the intent, I think, was beer and wine. Where does liquor come into play?
Liquor comes into play where people have private events or that kind of situation, or if there's a bar deciding the county that wants to open on Sunday, then go under that statute.
Been doing that anyway.
Right. And then what would be?
Right, Miller.
With including.
Someone.
If they're gonna do it anyhow, let them do it. I don't know if we, if we need to advocate selling liquor on Sunday or not. I know beer and wine, what I heard the tip was, but the liquor part. Uh, but I, I'm not gonna throw a monkey wrench in it. This is just, um, we, we go table it anyhow to say it for a second reading, so.
Under the statute, you cannot open a liquor store on Sunday under that statute. I know that for sure.
Right.
So I permit a liquor store from go, uh, open up. This is, um, this is just for liquor by the drink. A lot of restaurants will sell drinks, and that's, that's where you'd normally see the liquor by.
Right.
Yeah, but this statute, Mr. Jenkinson, they're talking about, it gives you the option of buying a license for one day or up to a year. So if someone were hosting an event, they could purchase a license for twenty-four hours to sell liquor at their event. What this says, it says permit is valid for a period not to exceed twenty-four hours, and may be issued only to bona fide nonprofit organizations and business establishments otherwise authorized, licensed, other, authorized, authorized to be licensed for sale. other authorized authorized to be licensed for sales. I mean, it's a little bit different, and I I'm not going, I'm like councilman, I'm not trying to test which you get in the middle of it. But but you have to go back on the code section on the second four of sixty-one code to get beer and wine in there. This is dealing strictly with liquor, the one that we got in this in this particular ordinance.
I'll tell you what I'll do on the next reading. I'll send out, tell before it, the current draft, and then I will put the options that you can include or exclude for third reading.
Okay, great.
Okay, that's. Make sure that these stores are able to sell beer and wine on Sunday. That was our major concern so far, the liquor, it could be here or there. But the the beer and wine is, I think, was the major concern that I have here in the community.
And and that's my concern, counsel, because I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to make sure the intent of the person initiating this is carried out, and that we don't authorize something.
The intent was the sale of beer and wine.
My question is, Mr. Jenkinson, when is the last date that we can get this? If we table it today, get a motion for them to table it, when is the last day that we can get this uh through so that?
I don't know the answer to that, but my my preference would be to go ahead and have second reading, and then at third reading.
Right.
Table it there or make a decision there. That way it will be a faster timeline, yes or no. But if we table it today, that's going to kick it over until the middle of August. Real close.
I agree.
Now we're from.
Right, um, with all that being. That being said, we got discussion, um. Are we, have we concluded discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Hearing nothing. By row, all those in favor of second reading for ordinance number twenty twenty dash eighteen. Please signify by saying aye and opposers the same. District one?
Uh.
I'm sorry, Mr. District one, I didn't hear you, sir.
He said aye.
Okay. District.
Aye.
District three?
Aye.
District four?
Aye.
Five, six?
Aye.
District seven?
Aye.
Yes, have it for second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty dash eighteen. Motion is carried. The next order of business is the supervisor's report. Um, due to the latest development, I'm going to table really the 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 concern or the supervisor report regarding COVID nineteen um and just be real brief at that, just to kind of let everyone know that we have done testing at this point. Um, we are waiting for um testing to um testing to uh be reenacted in our county again. I'm hoping that as soon, um, but we did do a lot of testing last week, which may have, you know, was the reason why the spike in the numbers. We're still holding fast. Running into issues where we are having a lot of county employees that are coming down and contracting COVID nineteen. So we're still trying to hold fast at where we are and hopefully um can continue to run government as we are, even though we've had additional restrictions on government. So I'm gonna pretty much leave it there um as far as any other things. It's really not much going on. We're still requiring people to wear their masks. Um, we're out in the community saying people don't have their masks on. We just really want people to to really just watch what's happening and just be mindful that if the mask is there to protect you as well as anyone else that you may come in contact with. Um, however, there has been some latest, I'm moving from COVID under the supervisor report into the next item of business. Um, I know that we have, um, there has been some some heated fellowship um in regard to what was discussed yesterday. So I'm asking that um we be allowed um that we get a motion for us to discuss this in open forum as it relates to how um the employees. So the motion, I'm I'm asking for us to open up discussion regarding what was discussed yesterday in the executive session regarding um the compensation for county employees.
So move district seven.
So I need that in the form of a motion.
District seven. So move.
Second.
For second.
Discussion and reference to the motion. Hearing none. By row, all those in favor for opening discussion up for uh the executive session item that was discussed yesterday, please signify by saying aye, opposers nay. District one?
Aye.
District two?
Aye.
District three?
Aye.
Districts? District four?
Aye.
District, thank you, district five, district six?
Aye.
District seven?
Aye.
I held a series of teleconferences, oh, the eyes have it, um, it, the motion is carried. I held a series of um discussions today with county employees regarding what uh was approved yesterday. And I must say that um the discussion was quite heated at times. Um, I listened to what the employees of Williamsburg County had to say. And a number of things came out during those conferences, during those conference calls, said I held three of them. One of the issues were basically the fact that the reduction of the pay was a selection item um as far as things that were proposed to council. Um, one of the the biggest issues is that county employees are also quitting, and they did not want the burden of the fact that there's a fifteen percent loss of revenue predicted for the county to be placed completely on them. Um, their recommendation was that we do a, an additional proposal, and that proposal would include um implementing a forty dollar fee and or raising millage in an effort to not reduce their salaries. Um, those were two of the things that they discussed. They really wanted to um get this out. Some of the employees uh during that conversation have threatened to walk out. Um, and I believe that that, you know, I believe in them and what they're saying, and I understand that that's that's basically what they're feeling right now. They're very frustrated. Um, so I just wanted to bring it to council's attention and talk to you all about that and to see if that can be an item that we go ahead and put up for for a proposal in the upcoming meetings.
Dr. Ryan, I have a, I have a question. Even though we've done what we did yesterday, if we were to and retract, um, what bearing would that have on us where we in our standing with trying to acquire this tan from the bank?
At this point, with that, with the information that we received yesterday of fifteen percent um with the fifteen percent reduction that come in any form, as long as the county was able to to do a fifteen percent. Our closing date is suspected for the tan is July thirtieth. Now, how it's all mixed up in there and how that happens, we were able to show the fifteen percent reduction. So we changed that as long as it admits to the fifteen percent reduction as 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 promised um in order to get the tan, then that's not, that's not an issue.
Dr. Ryan, wasn't it the plan was predicated on fifteen percent deduction across the overall budget? Wasn't each department asked to reduce their individual department by fifteen percent? Is that right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Departments did and some departments didn't, correct?
Twenty-seven departments did, twenty-seven did not.
So if those individual department heads would reduce their own budget by fifteen percent, whether it's cutting salaries, not buying pencils, cutting down on gas, whatever we would have instructed them to do, we would be in the clear, correct?
Yes, sir.
So then, so then if if that would be done, I I mean, I just don't see how you can have it your way always. You understand, if you were asked to reduce the budget within your department by fifteen percent, and that wasn't done, then when this was done, it was a problem. I I mean, at at what point, you know, are we going to be able to, I I guess, for lack of better terms, just work as a team? Because, you know, as we have to reduce by fifteen percent.
The desire from that point was that um with the budgets, we're already very lean um already. And for them to remove just operating expenses, what would end up happening is they won't make it with just reducing the operation um portions of their budget, even if they reduce them. The facts are is that if you reduce the budget, and I'm sure that even if if council forced a reduction on their budget, their operating expenses, we would still run into the red because you you can't, you know, reduce the electric bills, the um can't reduce all those bills, fuel bills, office supply. Um, yes, you can take some from travel and training, but that's where most of them took their first initial reductions at. Um, you also couldn't, like some paper services and things like that, that they could not reduce. Well, I think what it was is the fact that they were already working with a lean budget and to ask for fifteen percent put in on the salaries. According to um Mr. Larry Finney, he said in in his statement on June eighth that that there is no way that you can reduce the county budgets unless you look at also reducing something in the salary line items. That's what we've. Was that. So our options that they would like to propose or like me to talk to you all about is the two options. Of a forty dollar one-time fee or a raising millage. Or the alternative is they're going to get together pretty much, walk out.
First of all, everyone is not going to walk out. But I mean, that's neither here nor there. But now, when we wanted to propose the forty dollar fee, those same people were against it. But now that it's affecting them with the salary decrease, they they want to get, they, you know, they want to do it. So, I mean, what do they want? You can't have your cake and eat it too.
Dr. Ryan, let me interject one thing. I heard through the wind, through the a few things that they were concerned about uh from the meeting this morning as well. It was even though you or we have no authority to infringe uh in decrease elected official salary. But I just think it would be a good gesture on all the elected officials part. If they would voluntarily relinquish, I think uh it went from two percent to ten percent. If all the elected officials would relinquish a minimum of ten percent of our salary as well, and that would show a good gesture that we're all in this together, and we're going to suffer some, just like you're going to suffer. And perhaps that may take away a little bit of the respite from the employees. That would just might take on it if everyone would would um agree to do that. Because I'm most certainly on board with doing much more than the ten percent. And I just wish other people would follow that lead. And that may bring a little bit of resolve, or at least a little peace of mind to some of the employees that feel disgruntled about having to give up um a percentage of their salary.
Yes, that was a question, and I told everyone on each teleconference that I have volunteered my ten percent to take off of my salary. But it's a voluntary basis, simply because, you know, you can't, you can't order um elected officials to um reduce their salary.
I definitely do not mind doing the ten percent.
I want to go on record as um doing a minimum of ten percent. I'm going to do more than ten percent, but I just don't want to see how much. But a minimum, I'm going on record as doing ten percent as well.
Y'all know my position, I have no problem. Don't make the minimum was ten percent.
That's fine, that's fine with me. That's fine with me.
Okay, um. We'll, I'll take that back to them. They have also requested a meeting very similar to the ones that I attended to also talk to council in reference to um discussing how they really feel about everything. So um I think that that is also something that I I promised them that I would set up for them to have the opportunity to speak to you all that way. It's not a me telling you everything, it's them expressing it and vice.
That would have to of a public meeting of council because the council, the guests send out the usual notice and invite the public.
I got kicked out again, really?
Thank you, ma'am.
Um, all right, so I'm just putting those things up. I'll do, you know, you know, we can all talk and discuss this um. If it's necessary, but we, I will take this information back to them and let them know that, you know, you do have elected to give up their ten percent, and then we'll see how we go after that, all right?
Are you going to talk to all of the elected officials or just us?
Say that again.
Are you going to talk to all of the elected officials that the council has spoken? But we are not the only.
I'll, I'll reach out to them today.
Okay, okay.
And um, Madam Supervisor?
Yes, sir.
Could you give up, bring back a report to us that if all of the elected official were were to give up a minimum of ten percent, what would that?
You said bring back a report, that's all I heard.
Yeah, bring back a report to the council that if all of the elected officials uh in Williamsburg County were to relinquish ten percent minimum from their salary, what would that yield?
What would the savings be?
Okay.
And then let the, let the um people know too that the council gave, already gave up their discretionary money and property.
Right.
Well, at that point, I'll, I'll get that that information to you. Um, the the magic number to make up if they didn't have to do a reduction or the starting number is a little over six hundred and some odd thousand dollars. To, for no one to take a hit on anything. I'm working on that. Six hundred fifty-one thousand one hundred five dollars and thirty-two cent. Any other discussion?
I just got a question, Madam Supervisor, um about the timing of our meeting. So we going revert back to our regular Monday, first Monday of the week and and third Tuesday at six o'clock, or our meeting is going to be being held at two o'clock. And the reason I ask that because I got folks sitting in my office right now waiting on me. If we go.
So, um.
Fine, I need to just be have advanced notice so I can block my calendar, you know, and I'm not fine. Whatever everybody wants to do, I'm fine with it, you know.
No.
Only about three or four days notice.
Right.
I couldn't make it yesterday, I had deposition, and things have been scheduled for months, you know.
What I can do. I'm going to try to get Tammy, I'm going to get Tammy to poll you all to see if you still want to do these meetings at this time on Zoom, or if you want to do them later on in the evening. So I'll get her to poll them, what our old times were, get her to poll you guys and that. And giving enough. I have to take the hit for the 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 advanced notice for council because these things kind of um came up so quickly. We were trying to get through them and may not have been able to approve the agenda and so on and so forth, so I take that hit.
Madam Supervisor? Yes.
Questions regarding this, any other discussion regarding?
Yes, ma'am, um.
how do you propose to have a public meeting with council with these people? With these concerned workers?
How do I propose to have a public meeting with them?
Yes, ma'am, for council.
Just speaking, I was gonna be, like I did, I was, because it's just me do it um, via telephone conference. Um, it was pretty, it was much better than it is on Zoom. Um, with the 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 dialect, you can hear everybody, you know, some people talked over, but I think the best way to do it is probably either um, try to um, because it's going to be difficult to create social distancing unless I break the groups up small. So that's just a logistical, uh, logistics uh, issue that I need to work out. You know, even if it's, you know, getting them down to, you know, letters A and A through C, getting them to come in while you all are are there. But I just have to see how logistics, logistically, we're going to be able to work that out. I mean, the telephone worked well, me, it did. But there's going to be some other parameters that we're going to have to put in place because it's the full council, so. It has to be really correctly.
And do we, do we have?
I will be reaching out.
Now, do we have any ordinance or anything where uh, we have a a maximum amount of people we can have in any building, just in case you want to move it across the street?
Where?
Oh, um, I definitely still have to break it up in parts, um, as far as order, because that's what you're talking about. I had probably hunted them still on the phone even when I broke it up um, through um, you know, through the the alphabet, the last name of their alphabet. But I think that we need to put something together. Also develop the logistics plan to be able to make that happen and allow you all first, let you look it over to see if it's probable, get some dates and then allow the scheduling to begin.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, um, any other discussion? Hearing none, also under the supervisor report, um, we have Mr. Wayne Jackson here from Mercy Medicine Free Clinic. Um, here to discuss some of the services that they're offering.
I am meeting now, Doc.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Yes, sir, you're on.
Oh, it's my turn?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, thank you all for making time for me today here. Uh, I just want to take just a very few minutes, I think I have three minutes, as I understand it, just to um, familiarize everyone or re-familiarize you with Mercy Medicine Free Clinic. Uh, we are a Christ-based free medical and dental clinic that's located in Florence, South Carolina. And we provide free medical and dental services along with free medications to citizens in both Florence and Williamsburg Counties. And that's, that's why I'm kind of here today to remind you of that service. Uh, basically, what I'm asking you to do is just to uh, uh, help us put the word out about Mercy Medicine uh, and let me know how I can better reach out to the, to the potential patients we have there in Williamsburg County for you. Uh, we've, we have had a relationship with Williamsburg County for quite a while. Uh, as a matter of fact, at one time, I think we had as many as ten patients uh, from Williamsburg County, but now that number's dwindled down to to as few as five. And so we're just trying to re-revitalize that relationship, if you will. Um, basically, like I said, we provide uh, free medical and dental to qualifying patients. In a nutshell, to qualify for care for us, you have to be with four things. They uh, be a resident of Florence or Williamsburg County only, those only two counties that we serve. Uh, our patients, potential patients uh, have an income of two hundred percent or less of the federal poverty income level, depending on uh, the number of folks in the household. As an example, uh, for a single person in Williamsburg County, that's about twenty-five thousand dollars a year. Uh, thirdly, can have not, a patient cannot have any insurance or qualify for any insurance, and that includes Medicaid. And finally, be between eighteen to sixty-four years of age. Uh, we are not an emergent, we are not an urgent care clinic and we are not a walk-in clinic. Every patient that receives care through us must be enrolled to us. And uh, we try to encourage uh, folks to to come in and fill out an application or call us to do an application on Monday mornings between eight-thirty and noon, uh, so we can find out if they do qualify and set them up for their, for their first appointment. Uh, again, what's important also for Williamsburg County is that we do provide free transportation for clients in the county. Uh, we have a system set up with the Williamsburg uh, Transit Authority. And uh, we we give a patient, uh, once a patient's accepted for care from Williamsburg County, uh, we give the patient a voucher worth fourteen dollars that allows the patient round trip uh, from anywhere in the county. Uh, we, we will, the clinic will contact uh, the Williamsburg Transit Authority and let, and let them know the patient's address and when the appointment is. So uh, we're real proud of that. We've worked hard to maintain the 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 funds to be able to do that. And uh, so we generally have set up on Tuesdays to have those appointments from Williamsburg County. So again, we provide free medical and dental to to folks in Williamsburg County if they qualify. We'll also provide free medications and uh, and free transportation back and forth. So just wanted to, just to re-familiarize folks with Mercy Medicine. We're here to serve those folks uh, in your, in your county. If you know people that can benefit, uh, please, please let us know and and uh, just as important, let me know any venues I can go out and talk to folks about Mercy Medicine in your county. Right, Doc, right, that's it.
Do you have a number, a contact number?
Yes, ma'am, I certainly do. So, yes, thank you, Erica, eight four three six six seven ninety-nine forty-seven.
Okay.
And we have a website, there's uh, www dot mercy medicine dot org.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Right, thank you. If any questions, let me know. And thank you for the time, making time for me today.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson, we appreciate you here.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything for the good of the order. Hearing none, um, we need a motion.
District seven, so moved.
Our next item for, um, okay. You said second, you have a second for adjournment?
Second, district three.
Any discussion? Hearing none, and all those in favor by role, please signify by saying aye of adjournment, please signify by saying aye, opposers nay, by role call, district one? District two? District three?
Aye.
Four, four, five, six? Seven?
Aye.
For adjournment. All of them have a great evening. We are adjourned.